Well, thing is, I just want to do a little judge check for you. He just said it costs us thirty dollars.
Hey guys, we're up.
First time I talked to him.
We're ready? All right. All right, welcome y'all to our Rankin County Board of Supervisors May thirteenth meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Craig, would you say our invocation, please?
You are so good to us, provide for us, bless us abundantly. Lord, we acknowledge, we know we deserve it. Thank you, Lord, for your grace and the mercy that you give to us. I thank you, Lord, that you're gonna give these men wisdom and discernment. You're gonna give them what they need today to make kinds of decisions that are helpful to our community, Lord, to our county. Father, you're gonna help them understand the issues that are in play here and what to do about them. I want to thank you in advance, Lord, for how you're gonna provide them what they need today. Father, I pray that as we think about the events of the past week, some of the weather events we've had, Lord, we pray for those who've been most severely impacted. I pray, Father, that you'll help us to come up with a way and approach that we can address some of these issues that we have in our county. We know that we can trust and count on you providing Christ's name to them.
Amen.
We do need some guidance, I imagine.
Craig?
Do we have an agenda?
Yes. There's no need to sit down, Craig. You're right out of the chute.
It's my pleasure, my honor, my privilege to welcome Mr. Steve Eds and Mr. Lynn Norris here today so that the board can have a discussion on the potential for a bond issue. We've been talking about this for quite some time. One idea that we had about how to get going here this morning is to talk first about the financial arrangements or the financial aspects associated with the bond. You may actually hear some things this morning that will have an impact on your later discussions. And so, we felt like it would be a better part of wisdom to start with the financial side of this first and let Mr. Lynn Norris come forward and give you guys a little bit of an update on the proposal itself and some numbers that may, in fact, impact your later discussions.
So, you're saying it's a little too late to propose moving forward with what we have now?
No, sir, it's not. I just think that what you need to hear is that some of the...
We're waiting to hear it out.
Some of the implications with respect to the financing may be different from what you have heard previously, and that may impact your later discussions.
Boy, how about this?
That doesn't sound good.
Monday morning.
I wish it met Tuesday.
Well, I got several scenarios. Let me find the one that I think you'll be the most interested in here. I had it just a minute ago. Authorizes.
You got credit where you go. Out. Get that tie so small you can't really read it.
You know what you're looking at? Brayle, you need Brayle down there.
Exactly.
Here, I'll pass these around. Y'all go and admit it, you need a pair of them.
Mine's at two hundred, but I need to go up. Two fifty's too strong, two hundred's too weak, and I can't find the two twenty-five. At Walmart, man, I've got it.
Walmart. They got them.
All right, looking at, we've looked at, you know, limited offering to the banks, and they're good. You know, that's, banks are good sometimes.
Hey, before we go any further, I want to ask a question. If we were to go straight to a bank and offer them a deal and say, hey, we want to, you know, offer you, you know, fifteen million dollars, and they do us a straight line, you know, loan, that cuts out, government salt in it cuts out, Butler Snow cuts out, Craig's fee, we minus all that, is that correct?
Well, if you could legally do that, but you can't legally do that.
Jay's not worried about that.
Okay.
That's just a minor thing, isn't it?
Well, no, I had actually a bank president called me this weekend wanting me to do that very thing.
Yeah.
So, obviously, he didn't know that, or he didn't care, one.
He will know when his regulators come in and tell him that is not a proper loan.
Because up until then, I've always heard, like, I'm assuming we're gonna go with Raymond James and they're going to sell the bonds to the banks at that point, and they're still not gonna take a loss. Am I wrong?
Well, sometimes they'll lose if they, on competitive deals and even on underwritten They take down bonds in anticipation of reselling those bonds, at least what they gave for them, and sometimes that does not work. Cost market changes. But, you know, there was, it's kind of an ebb and flow in the market. At one time this year, bank, short-term bank deals, if you could get a deal, you know, under twelve years, it could, those at that month or two window that we had this year, bank deals was better than underwritten deals. But now the market has flipped. I mean, it's, the ten-year started off today at a two forty-two. The thirty-year is at a two eighty-six. The two-year was, is a two twenty-one, I believe, two twenty-two. So, we're, you know, your two-year rates are higher than your five-year rates, one or two basis points, but it's kind of, you got that inversion there. You got the ten-year back probably earlier this year was at a three fifty, or right under a three fifty. So, it's, we're in a timeframe to really look at issuing premium bonds, and this is where an underwriter comes in, and there's a market after to take a five percent coupon, issue, you'll be paying interest rates on the five percent, but you're going to generate over three million dollars more than likely in premium bonds. And that's what this shows here, is how much you'd be doing on a fifteen-year. So, the market is better today on an underwritten deal than it is on a bank, on a banker. Now, that could change, and we hadn't gone out to get term sheets from the banks, we don't know. The, looking back at two current deals, a twelve-year deal went, limited bank offerings were three twenty-seven. A month or two later, passed that deal, I think there's a little lag in there. A twelve-year deal went for a two ninety. So, you just don't know. Banks are unpredictable, too, you know, it's, so.
So, you're saying going with a premium bond, doing this, what you're just saying?
Right.
We actually got to stop, so let him go ahead and do his presentation. Jay stopped him with a question. He never really got started.
Okay, all right. Any other? Have I confused you enough? Okay.
Just move on forward.
All right, we're looking at here, a fifteen-year underwritten, underwritten deal. Raymond James is, you know, have added the rates, the premium rates, well, this is, and I have a little more conservative one right here, but you could, you could generate three hundred, I mean, three, thirty million dollars under this scenario.
Three million.
Three million.
Three million.
Yeah, you said thirty.
Yeah. Net the project, thirty million net the project.
Thirty million is what you're saying.
Thirty million dollars net to county.
Yeah.
That's why I said that you needed to hear the financial aspects of this based on the latest data because it could impact your other decisions that you need to make. Everybody on the same page? We've been talking about something totally different than what's happening right here because we didn't know that the market was gonna be able to generate from that diligent act and with a conservative growth estimate. We did not know at that time what it could generate from the bond revenue side. So, now you know.
Now, this contemplates the reallocation of the millage for two years. But, now, for, any projects that the road department is doing that qualifies for being able to spend bond proceeds for, you can use these funds for that purpose.
To help you guys, if it's, if it's a road project and it's, Steve, if it's within a close enough in time timeframe from the date of issuance, then the expenses that have been put, that have been paid toward those road projects conceivably can be reimbursed from bond proceeds as long as there's eligibility there.
You say timeframe, what is that timeframe?
Well, I'm gonna, sixty days from the date you adopt the bond resolution.
We're out of Holly Bush, I guess.
But if it's an ongoing project, but again, we're gonna defer to bond council to help us evaluate precisely what can count and what can't, but I would at least like to start with the position that if it's an ongoing project, an active project within that timeframe, then we want to talk about reimbursing the project.
Can I ask a question that's specific to Holly Bush Road? We have not finalized it, we're very near. Would we be able to go back just sixty days on the monies we've spent, or would we be able to go back for the whole project?
Have, what have you spent money on engineering?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, engineering expenses could be reimbursed.
It's almost complete.
I can only go back six months.
If you acquire right-of-way that would not be reversible, any type of engineering could go back in front, I mean, the sixty days would not affect your ability to reimburse yourself for those engineering costs.
Even if it was a year ago, the engineering?
Correct.
Oh, I thought it was six months was the cap.
Not for engineering, but for actual construction costs, it's sixty days.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
So, same thing would apply to like, going to run a road.
Yep. Right-of-way acquisition with that.
No, no right-of-way. I don't think right-of-way is qualified.
Right-of-way, just really planning.
Yep. Okay. Will you explain that a little more about how this will generate thirty million dollars?
You're issuing a five percent coupon, and the buyer of that bond is going to pay, instead of a par, we'll say, that bond is a thousand dollars. Well, he may pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars for that bond. That is your money. That excess is your money to, and it accumulates from three to five to six million dollars depending on what the interest rates are at that time, the treasury rates, the ad-fund rates. These are kind of the, you know, the baselines that people look at, what alternative investments that they can get. They know that these bonds that have a call date, so they know their investment is protected to the call date. So, and that's how you generate the money from the premium, is the difference between the interest rate that you're paying, the five percent, and the yield that the investor is earning on his money. So, he's willing to pay more money in today's market because over that ten-year period or whatever period, he's gonna earn a lot more money than he would, right?
We're fortunate to be in a position where there's, there's not a lot of really good competition for good investments. We are a good investment, and it's hard to find in the market as good of investments so they're willing to pay a premium to be able to invest with us.
I guess that's why Mr. Sullivan has joined us today to kind of help vouch for our ad valorem growth or where we are here today and the assumptions that we're going to utilize in this bond issue. Is that why you're joining us?
I'm all leaders.
John's involving this question? Come on in there, John. Come on in there, baby.
What brought you that conclusion? I think the numbers. I mean, money going out, money coming in.
On the growth of the assessed values, what are you projecting?
Maybe one to two percent.
There's a one and a half percent projection in this.
Okay.
This will delay the amendment.
Well, and I'm not surprised that we say that. If you go buy a gallon of milk and go back five or ten years later, you're not gonna pay the same thing for it, and that's something we'll have to address, but I'd say we will have to address that whether we do this or not.
Yeah.
What do you say, John?
I said, I said it last time we were here, you know, that you're gonna need to raise taxes. And now's the time. You're the only one in the crosshairs because you've got a November opponent, you know, and that's just gonna come into play. But now's the time to do it. Everybody knows that's when you, right when you go to the new turn, you go ahead and bite the bullet, and then hopefully everything continues to move forward, grow, and everybody gets more money in their pocket and don't really pay attention.
Well, when we did it some years ago, we actually knew that was like everything else. It's, things get more expensive and...
They are. It's been eleven years, eleven years since we raised taxes.
Right, if you wanna keep doing things, keep the, you know, crack out and growing. And what I found, most people, as long as they see where they're going, they're not as hard. But anyway.
I'm like, I'm for not raising taxes at this time.
Well, I am, too.
Hey, John, the thing that made me question is, you hear all these cities talking about all their, you know, tax revenues up, and I know some of it's sales tax, but some of it's ad-valorem, too. Why aren't we not benefiting from, like, round bottom, you know? Brandon's beating on their chest, they're fixing to get a war, you know, war chest coming out of that, and we're on the same length as them. I know that's just one little speck in the county, but are you saying there's just not enough?
I think the mayor, I think the mayor said they were trying to suspend, what, a six hundred thousand dollar bump in ad-valorem? About a hundred and thirty from Petchen, the rest come from all those houses that have been built, you know, in the city, finally coming online.
Hey, I just want you to know, we on the same team, okay? All right.
That's why I'm treating my words.
Good.
Much better than I did last time.
All right.
Well, let me ask you this, I thought of this, let's say, okay, on the gun road extension, we're good on it except for about three hundred thousand dollars.
Wait a minute, we jumped off on a road budget. We're talking about raising taxes.
No, but I'm asking him about reimbursement. I'm talking to him about reimbursement, but we can wait and talk about it, man. Go ahead, get through your taxes. I'm just talking about reimbursement of, could that money be reimbursed? Could that would be for probably engineering?
So, tell me.
Because we're growing and assessed value is increasing.
Yeah.
But we're also speeding.
Right.
And we're speeding faster than we're growing.
Well, I do realize nobody's failed to mention that seven hundred thousand dollar purse tax we about to get tackled on this year.
Let's not forget, I'm a quarter of a million to the city of Flowood either. I always enjoy saying that and bringing that up. I don't know why, but I just really do. You seem to always want to kind of forget about it, too.
I'm almost gonna miss you, too. I probably would miss you.
I might just come back for meetings for that.
Might be public comment, huh? He come back to public comment.
I'm trying to keep us categorized as to where we are in this discussion. So, where we are right now, we're talking about the financing aspect, it's markedly different than what you guys were looking at previously, so I want you to focus on that part of it first, okay? It's very much different. So, it appears to me that what you've just heard is that, given the structure that you were already prepared for, the potential revenue is significantly higher than you thought it would be, significantly higher, and so, you just need to decide, I think you guys need to telegraph to your professionals, are we going to insist on doing a bank deal only, or are we gonna go after this premium money that makes a lot of sense while at the same time, by the way, encouraging our underwriters to use the local banks? They don't have to do that.
Right.
Just insist that they make every effort to do it.
Was there ever a question we were going with just banks?
I think we started off with just bank conversations. I think that's what men propose, but now that dynamic has changed.
Why did you ask your first question?
No, I mean, I've just assumed that we were going to go to the market, and then the market was to the banks.
I didn't, I mean, really, I thought we, for some reason, we're just leaning towards the bank, and then...
Well, if we're gonna do that, then we don't need these gentlemen in this room.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying that's what it kept coming out, so this is a whole new twist.
Right.
We'd never heard of.
Felt like because there had been discussion, and I may have misread all of that, Jay, but the discussion, as I appreciated it previously, was, we want the local banks to be able to participate. Did I miss that? I think, I think that was the implication.
Right.
We want them to be able to participate. What you're being told today, though, essentially puts us in a position where we're gonna have to use the underwriting approach.
There's no way around it.
To be able to take advan, well, the legalities of it, the size of this issuance, the structure of the issuance, the paperwork requirements, I, there's just not gonna be a way for us to do what we want to do.
Without getting too deep into the woods, can you explain to me, because Lindsay assured me that, you know, last time around, How Williams made a big play at the end, he wanted to buy them off. He wanted to do it. And she assured me that they would be made whole, that they would be offered the bonds, they would still be able to make money. Where is their, you know, where is their loss at in this?
There shouldn't be a loss, but I know sometimes, underwriters, I'm not talking about Raymond James, underwriters buy bonds or take down bonds that they didn't sell in the market. They hold those bonds. Instead of getting a one twenty, twelve hundred dollars for that thousand dollar bond, they may have to sell that bond for ninety-eight hundred dollars, or nine hundred and eighty dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars to just get it out, to move it on out. So, that's where they, their risk is, but once you sign that DPA and these are the rates, those rates are locked in, whether they sell them or not, they've got to deliver you based on what they told you they would deliver them.
Well, that really did answer my question, but, but the chance of them losing money is significant. If they lose money, it will be a significant amount of money.
That's right. Well, the risk of them losing money is not likely. You know, it's a low probability that they, because they know their market, they've already pre-sold, you know, they may lose on a portion of it, but, you know.
All right.
They wouldn't be in the business that is, you know.
So, but we're still talking about the financing side, still taking the mill out of Road and Bridge for two years to help facilitate that something's gonna work. That part of the deal is still, the repayment is still the same scenario.
That is, yes, that is part, that is that scenario, and I'll let, you know...
Well, let me ask, a mill, correct me in that, a mill, our mill, but a bond mill would generate more money than our mill.
That's correct. That's right.
Okay, so, all right, so the mill we take out is gonna generate more for, if we want it, for the road or whatever.
Right. Anything that qualifies, so, yes.
Yeah. So, the same commitment, the same debt service, the same structure, you're being told under this analysis will yield significantly more in bond revenue than you anticipated.
And it goes, same scenario too goes, we can still vote for whatever the maximum number is, we don't necessarily have to borrow that or have to spend it.
Correct.
I mean, I mean, if we...
But this is a whole new universe.
If we agree, we agree to a set of projects and it comes up to be twenty million or twenty-five million, not to twenty-eight, then we can always scale back the face amount to whatever that number is.
Lord, son, you just keep growing, don't you? Damn.
You're spending other people's money, you know, it's just hard to stop.
Well, your, your, your bonds are paying off rather quickly. Your authority to issue additional bonds is in the neighborhood of a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars.
Let's go.
So, you...
You tell me about that.
It is a very favorable interest rate market to be doing infrastructure improvements, and if they don't get done, who's gonna build? The kids? I mean, I mean, that's...
Yeah. Well, without a doubt, we need to do some bonds or we're gonna go broke, so, or either we just need to cut off some projects.
If I could use a honest question, I mean, you'd need to adopt an intent resolution that will publish for four times and giving the, the public has the right to protest if fifteen hundred people object to the gift election. But we need to know, you know, an amount for that resolution, and I think I would suggest probably thirty million, and then we come back four weeks after we publish, and hopefully at that time, you'll tell us, well, we only want to issue twenty-seven million. But we've got total flexibility until the time we actually decide how much we're gonna issue. What I'd hate for you to do is not authorize enough and start the process all over again.
The whole reason we're having this meeting today is because we had a differential between sixteen and a half and eighteen. What we gonna do, where we headed now, guys?
The only question that wasn't asked last time, you said that we could go to eighteen, but when we went to sixteen, you said that we need to make it sixteen and a half for issuance costs. Well, if we went to eighteen, what's the issuance cost of eighteen? Well, if we went to eighteen, what's the issuance cost of eighteen?
Three percent, just figured.
About how many percent?
Three. I, I, on, on my performance, I use three percent of the bank deals, then back down once all the costs is in. You never know, you know, this.
I'm still, with John saying what he said, and y'all are saying we can do this and service it with what we have, where, what's the difference? Where, where are we not coming together here?
On, on this plan, you pay your bonds out of a bonding interest bond that has, let's see, you remember many years ago, you paid it out of a general bond, somewhere around two thousand, and you paid it out of a general bond, so...
Yeah, all of a sudden you told me that was a no-no.
Well, you, 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 what you wanna do is build a platform to, to, to develop a capital plan. And so, when you maintain, you levy the same, you, you, we do roll off and roll on fees, but you capture the increased valuations, you generate more money in the bonding interest bond, which normally you just pay debt service. But that allows you to do a whole lot more work, work than waiting on getting one bond issue paid off before you go doing another. It just, it doesn't work. That, that plan paid about a general bond does not work long term. So that's, that's why we did, that's why we can do it, and that's why we're not impacted. Now, we would be impacted if the assessments didn't grow at one and a half percent on hand, or if they fail thirty percent, but everything's gonna be impacted. I think we can do more than thirty million, but can you do it within three years?
Steve, I think to answer your question, what you talked about a while ago, is what he said, the PERS, the, the Flowood, the, the bonus, what, a raise? We do a raise, healthcare, I mean, and, and, and we've been borrowing how much out of Road and Bridge each year? Two, two billions to, to do what we've been doing? So you add all that up, and that's what, that's what John has come up with. If we're spending more, we have been lucky enough, we've been bleeding out Road and Bridge. We will be at, what, at a ten million dollar balance by the end of this year, FYI? I mean, we bled through seven million dollars out of Road and Bridge over the last couple of years. And there's, and there's proof out there to see it. We, we've got it on our road projects, but we have just blown through it, 'cause we just thought we were printing it in the back, you know? But that, that's to me is what you're telling me, right, John? Is that kind of where you are, seeing what we, what we've got expenditures coming? And if we're gonna maintain the quality of work in our Road and Bridge Department, there's no way we can sustain it without raising taxes?
You're already pulling out of your cash.
Yeah.
We've gone two years from the City of Flowood, you know, convention out of cash, so I mean, you know, uh...
Three or four times.
You're speeding more than you're making.
But you can make the road gone whole, just one mill, you can take that for qualified projects though, so, you can do more than that.
So I heard you made the mention of thirty million. Or is that just a number out of the sky?
No, 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 it, uh, it's taken for the interest rates or current, current interest rates, treasury rates or, and what the market is paying for that higher, for that five percent.
So it's saying we can do thirty million within our current tax structures?
I, I, I'm just, I'm stuck that we, we were looking at sixteen and a half to stay at the total eighteen million, and whenever John and, you know, and I understand, we have taken money from the road, but what we've taken it for, I would say the majority of it, I would say seven million over the past four years, right away. Engineering costs, stuff like that for new roads and, and existing roads. I don't mean just all new.
And equipment too, I mean, we...
And some equipment, equipment to work the roads that, uh, you know... I think we need to maintain the road as well, and quit spending tremendous amounts of money on engineering and right away on roads that we don't have. I mean, that, if you put all that money back in there that we spent with engineers, Mike and his people's equipment, and, well, then that seven million is probably cut in half or, or even more. But anyhow.
What is, what did you tell me, Mike, the, the work orders, what is that, million and a half a year that we spend on work orders? Two and a half million on work orders alone? And that doesn't take consideration overlay, and, and the other stuff, you know? And we, and we live and die by work orders, you know?
And that was kind of my discussion and argument several meetings ago, back in the past of the whole situation, was the reason we needed to make some kind of decision on it, 'cause all these projects that are going down the, the tube, is what's coming out of the road budget right now.
Right.
So what needs to happen is either the projects need to stop and let him do his summer work plan on the budget, because what's happening is we can't get any work done in the county, because we're spending it all on those projects, which is four and a half million set to come out of this year's budget, just on projects if we don't address the bond issue, or stop it, one of the two. That's my argument several meetings ago, I was explaining to you. We need to give him direction, because we're gonna lose the summer on stuff that needs to be done.
Not just that, it's work orders too.
There's no doubt.
But I don't know why you say lose the summer, 'cause he could be working, I mean, weather pressure work now.
Well, he can, but...
But he's not, he's already budgeted.
But he's budgeted, you're correct. He's budgeted, but the money's already spent on these projects, not for the other stuff.
We ain't spent the money on the projects yet.
But it's in there.
But it's in there, but it's been approved to do it.
I mean, we're getting ready, we're getting ready to approve those projects. But, and that's assuming that we agree with what these guys tell us, how we can...
We are spending money through right away.
We are, absolutely.
Yeah, but you're not talking about very much right now.
Over a million bucks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like to me Santa Claus came early this year.
Yes, sir. We put a million in Gunner Road.
So anyway...
Not right away.
Well, I'm talking about engineers, all the seats that go with Gunner Road have been a million dollars.
We're not locked in to it.
They don't, they don't...
You say right away, that's what I'm saying. It's not right away, it's everything.
So acquiring all this...
Just about everything we want, uh, out of this.
That, the whole purpose is to let you guys know that, that the revenue side of this is different from what you've heard previously. Therefore, when you start getting really serious about projects, you needed to know what, what can we spend and not impact...
Rather than us arguing over this one, or that one, or this one, or that one.
Right, it's a different discussion, in my opinion now, about all these other projects in relation to what the revenue will support. That's why we wanted y'all to hear that first.
But they need us to make a decision, try to make a decision today on the issuance amount, so we can go ahead and start that process.
I thought, I thought we already did that.
No, sir, we've got to have...
Would we vote to approve?
We did, sixteen and a half being...
Remember y'all, y'all shut me down on eighteen, went back to sixteen and a half, and y'all brought it back up, to go back up to eighteen. Assuming, assuming what we proved.
We did adopt a resolution.
Yeah, we had a resolution ready.
That we're gonna sign today, that's right.
But now, though, is the point in time where we set the number, there is no backing up.
That's right. I mean, we can always, we don't have to spend the entire thirty.
No, if we, if we say thirty, we can back up.
No.
He did say that.
Oh, well, yeah, we can say thirty, as long as we don't go above thirty.
No, I understand that, yeah, no. No.
What, uh, you mentioned a number higher than thirty, is, is there a number higher than, than this debt service?
As far as the intent, you can go higher.
But you gotta add millage too.
We will, we will recommend not going beyond your revenue stream to pay.
Got you.
Well, sir.
Which is where we are today. Which is where we are today.
That's right.
Sixteen.
No, we're thirty if you, if you got this one, usually it's sixteen.
Happened to where we get to thirty, where the other day we were sixteen and a half.
It was a premium you're talking about.
Got any bourbon in there?
Please.
No premium at all.
And if there's not any?
This is fifteen a year with the premium.
That the market will...
It puts you in a different ballpark of investor.
Yeah, I got it.
And they like what you're selling, and they're willing to pay you more money to buy it. It's that simple.
I mean, we need to be realistic, we gotta pay it back at some point, and...
I think we got the money, are you getting ready to pony in some? You go, you go...
Bring that cash over there.
Pull out a roll.
All right. I mean, he's saying, I mean, if I'm correct, I'll say it one more time, the millage, the, the, the five point six-three mills that we're generating will, will pay the debt service on a thirty million dollar bond for how many years?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen-year bond.
And you're gonna have that six point whatever mills for two years, then it falls back where you are.
Yes.
This is all going crooks on the...
You have four point six-three assigned to bond and interest category. Four point six-three mills is already sitting there right now today. You add one mill from Road and Bridge to bond and interest to go to five point six-three, and that debt services up to a thirty million dollar issuance for the first two years. You put the one percent of Road and Bridge back where it belongs, and the four point six-three that's currently in bond and interest will debt service for the remaining thirteen years of the term.
During those first two years, our road is gonna be whole, even though we've taken that mill out?
The theory that we're working from today, Steve, is that we will take some portion that we're allowed to under the law of the bond revenue, which at the moment appears to be significantly more than we thought it could be, and move that into the appropriate categories, uh, under the road department budget.
That's eligible.
Yes, sir, that's eligible. And that would offset that reduced revenue in the Road and Bridge from the bond proceeds. Of course, they, he would get all of that, presumptively, he'd get all of it on the front end, so it'd be sitting there.
Yep, right, we already have somewhere else to reach back.
We have the money, it's there, there's qualified projects that it can be assigned to, and that would, theoretically, that would make the road department whole for those first two years out of the bond revenue.
Same way with the cities.
Yes, and, and the thought process behind that is, we've, we've gotta work with them about projects.
Yep.
Okay, because it would be bond revenue.
So they would have to have a designated project in order to receive their two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we give them a year, or whatever the number is.
Why would they have to, we give it to them anyway, why would we, why would they have to have designated projects?
Because it's not money that's coming out of the Road and Bridge millage at that point, it's bond revenue.
So, so if they don't, so if they don't have a project designated for it, they wouldn't get any money from us?
Wait a minute, why couldn't you still take it out of Road and Bridge, though? You could still take it out of it, because you're offsetting it with, uh...
If I give a million dollars.
Only things we got designated as projects.
But we're off, we'll have it to offset.
Only if it's project-related, correct?
If you're gonna use the bond revenue, but there's other ways that we can skin the cat.
I mean, I can guarantee you, every city has overlay projects. You can rest assured, you can supplement that with an overlay project, every city, within a three-year period.
Does that have to be, at what point does that have to be designated and what the project is? On the front end?
We don't have to designate the projects, I mean, I think the board needs, I think as a board as a whole, we need to designate the project, but nothing for the bond council, we, this is all going to, you've, you've classified what the drainage, road construction, building construction, whatever. We just need, they just need to know today that thirty million, twenty-five, whatever. And I've made the motion at thirty million.
Wait, can, Bob, can we, he, he said he had three scenarios, can we see what the...
Oh, absolutely, that, by all means, that, I'm sure.
All right, you, that's one scenario. You said you had three, I think.
Oh, well, this is, the others just have related to what you could pay for that, but one, which is much of the cash. It is, you don't have to use two million dollars a year, money each year to supplement it, doesn't make any sense doing that right. This is, uh, this is the best solution.
All right, I, let me ask you, Mike, you have had to use about two million dollars for the last couple of years to fund your road in addition to the budget. And, I mean, we've had extreme weather conditions in the last two years, with more water than we've ever had in two years. Uh, but, with this, will you have to, I mean, can we cut it off with your budget when, if we fund you the way that we have been talking?
I, I, I think so, if I'm hearing everything right, so, you know, I mean, we won't have, you know, if we get this going, we won't have right-of-way acquisitions coming out of us, all these engineering, extra engineering fees coming out of us. I mean, they'll be assigned to projects instead of just directly coming out of my budget, like they've been doing for like three to three years.
Wanda, is there any way possible, between now and Wednesday, to determine what eligible expenses would be able to be reimbursable back to the Road and Bridge out of the bond? Or is that too, or is that too tight a timeline?
Say it again, what you wanna know?
How much money will actually come back to Road and Bridge that's reimbursable out of the projects we've done? How much, how much are dollars could we say?
Andrew Chapel.
Whatever's out there that we've spent, you know? I mean, even the little Thomasville or that little project down there, I mean, whatever's reimbursable back, i- i- it's just a prudent thing to do. I mean, isn't that the prudent thing to do, then? Try to get as much reimbursement expense on the front end to put back into it? And then that leaves us a net number to work off future capital construction, you know? So, we make, we make Road and Bridge, that Road and Bridge as whole as we can, you know, with what we've got.
Figure out what that number is.
What that number is, and, and try to do that, and that tells us...
But it's only gonna be, she needs to know, it's only for engineering, can't be, can't be for right-of-way.
And it needs to be a, a project that's still ongoing, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Well... Well, I think you do, you can do right, engineering from Andrew Chapel.
And Tolly Bush.
I mean, Holly Bush, excuse me, Holly Bush.
And Andrew Chapel.
Yeah.
And Gunner.
Yes, you can use Gunner, Andrew Chapel, Holly Bush for engineering.
Yeah, I mean, any of these projects...
Well, I know, but I'm just saying it's for engineering, I didn't want her to look at right of way.
But any of these projects, it's kind of like that Thomasville Gold and Road thing, I mean, we probably spent a hundred...
Listen to Steve, I want, I want Steve to give a little bit more clarity about how the bond revenue can be assigned to ongoing current road projects.
Well, I, I think, what, to answer Bob's question, I mean, if you go back on the projects that are ongoing and determine what the engineering and planning have been for those projects, then that's an amount of money that you could reimburse your Road and Bridge fund for. That should be fairly easy to determine, I think.
Yeah, we can sit down and actually look at that as a category and figure out which of the road projects have planning services, engineering-related services to them, in assignment.
So, the longer the word of it is, anything above sixteen and a half million dollars, we're gonna pay taxes on eventually.
Pay taxes.
Just the income. Tax rates now, and it will be, you're not gonna be increasing them yet.
So where did you get off saying there's gonna be a tax increase?
It's somebody out of case. I didn't say that.
They didn't say that.
It's, it's, it's anticipated, guys, that, that we cannot continue to take two and a half million dollars of cash and move it over to Road and Bridge to help fund the operation of Road and Bridge.
Oh, we know that's coming to an end.
That's come to an end, I think we agreed ten million was our...
I don't know that John necessarily has heard that stated as clearly as you just stated. John, that may be the first time you've heard, that's coming to an end. So if we say we're not going to continue moving cash over to Road and Bridge, then we've bought some additional time beyond what John is probably waving the flag of warning about. We may have bought even some more time, but the day is coming when just the general cost of running this red killing, we call it, right in the county, is going to outstrip forty point two four miles. It's just gonna cost more to hire boats. Mike added two crews over the last, what, three years? Two, two, two to three years?
So we, our population is...
Precisely.
And rooftops...
With good reason, we might study, I mean, we can already argue. Hey, there's something that we can show... Hey, there's something that we can show for this, uh, effort that has been made to make sure that we have top notch road department. There's something to be said for that, because you drive around the county and see the evidence of it.
We, we have a top notch sheriff's department, top notch ambulance service, top notch road. And.
And those services cost.
People value that.
They cost money. So I think what John's trying to say is this, forty point two four with a conservative growth rate gets you so far. And what we're seeing, just the, the symptoms that we're seeing is that we're having to pull pretty heavily from cash on any basis to, to do what we're doing. To, to deliver the services that's expected, it's taking us pulling pretty hard out of cash. That's why John's waving the flag. We probably need to consider at some point resetting that millage that we asked folks to pay so that we're not having to pull out of cash to cover everything. If they are expecting the services at that level, then they need to pay the millage at that level.
We have to introduce that to them slowly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. So that they understand.
So it's, it's not, I'm not gonna say that we're being unfair because this is all a great discussion to have, in my opinion. But these professionals right here are trying to advise you on a very narrow scope, which is what will your debt service column allow you to issue? So that you can get a lot of projects that are otherwise gonna have to come being, and be paid from somewhere else, that you could use this revenue stream to cover those sums. And what they're telling you is, we thought it was gonna be sixteen, we thought it was possibly eighteen. Then we looked at a different way to finance this in a market that's very favorable to Rankin County today. And we see that we can generate significantly more money than that.
Well, we just really double the term, so you're doubling the money.
It seems to me like, you might wanna think about this in that by doing a deal somewhere in the name, somewhere around what Lynn has suggested, you're actually, in my mind, delaying having to make the tax increase.
Correct.
Because you're taking care of these needs with these bond proceeds without a tax increase.
And that time's coming in August when we sit down to discuss next FYI, determining, you know, how much money we got coming in, how much we got going out.
Somebody won't be here.
That's where we get paid the big bucks. Alright. I think, I think Lynn made the comment, the other two scenarios, you know, I made the motion, the motion stood out there on my part that we issued them out not to exceed thirty million dollars. I don't know if there's any more questions or not. We need to keep leaving this thing forward.
Alright, we have a motion by Bob, thirty million. Is there a second?
Oh, come on. Somebody's seconding it. Good grief.
I want to know, I mean, when we do a fifteen year bond, I just feel like that there's gonna be time somewhere between now and fifteen years, maybe in seven years or ten years, that we have other things. And are we tied up? But, I mean, can't, because we went fifteen years. I mean, our roads don't last fifteen years before we have to resurface them. So, and we're.
How much debt rolls off?
How much between in fifteen years? I mean, can you say like in five years, this amount rolls off, in ten years?
Bob, I, I'll split it with you. I do twenty.
I don't, well, why, what about issuing that and then we can come back? I mean, what they're asking is to say that. Okay, then we can come back and, and close the gap.
Willing to spend up to thirty million.
No, no, I'm saying, we can come back.
One vote. Let's put it to a vote.
No, what I'm saying, Jay, we, when we come back and actually decide to issue, we can actually shorten. We're not committed to it right now.
All, all of your existing debt rolls off, is paid out in twenty twenty-two. Debt falls off.
Alright.
Incrementally.
Say, go five years from now.
Five years from now.
Cause you're talking about eleven years right there.
Alright, let's see. You're dropping off. In twenty twenty-four, you're dropping off from five point four to three point four.
Wow.
You have a lot of capacity to be.
How do you split the difference at twenty?
Alright.
Tell, tell me, tell me a scenario with twenty million.
Split the difference at twenty? Jay. How do you split the difference at twenty? We're at sixteen, we're at eighteen.
Tell me, tell me a scenario of a twenty million dollar bond.
No, we're at thirty.
Does the numbers, tell me how the numbers.
Split the difference at twenty.
Can you do it?
The difference would be like twenty-four.
The twenty is the max I'm willing to get, put it that way.
Okay, that's fine.
That'd be the lowest you could go with that?
Saying, what was your question?
Give me a scenario with twenty million rather than thirty million.
I can't off the top of my head.
Why not?
You're, you're generating thirty million dollars in projects off of twenty-eight million.
Okay. So how many?
You don't be right at twenty million.
Twenty-two, maybe, twenty-one?
Please, Jay.
Sorry.
Hey, Jay, hey, Jay, figured out that right there.
Jay threw the number twenty out there. At twenty, we would have somewhere around eighteen.
But if, if you go out with twenty, we can work through all of these scenarios till you get ready to say how much you're gonna issue.
The thirty million just starts the newspaper, I don't know, so you, but starts the conversation in the public that it's a thirty million dollar bond.
That's correct.
That's what opens the floodgates of the thirty million dollar bond, is the discussion, because most of them are gonna read possible thirty million dollar bond, and you're not gonna read anything else.
They were saying twenty. I mean, I've been down in road before.
And, and you know how it works. If, if we have, uh, if I have fifteen dollars in my pocket by Saturday, I'm gonna spend all of fifteen dollars probably. If I, if I have thirty, I'm gonna probably spend thirty, uh, especially if Jay gives it to me. So.
The flip side of the coin is that if you say that the issuance is not to exceed twenty million and we work through these projects and discover that if we had had twenty-one, we could have cleared all of this that we're talking about out, would have been nice if we had had twenty-one.
I think we could spend a hundred.
Oh, no doubt. But I think you're gonna have the same pushback at twenty you're gonna have at thirty. I don't think it'll make any difference. Twenty or thirty is not gonna make any difference as far as the pushback.
And I say eighteen. People like that eighteen.
Well, let's do this. You know, let's do this then. Let's, we can put this off longer. Longer we keep putting it off, the, the chance, the market may change again. We may lose its premium. But if you want to, let's go ahead and push to thirty. And let's have the, not the fifteenth, but the last meeting in May, that, that meeting, I'm gonna say work session. And, uh, have a discussion of what projects we wanna do and let's finalize the number. I mean, if it's twenty-two million, then we say, okay, we're doing it at thirty, but we're gonna, the board has voted on whatever vote. Here's the project, here's the estimated cost, this is what we're gonna do.
I kinda thought that's what we were gonna do today.
Well, I thought so too, but when I was looking at it for eighteen and thirty, you know, so we got to give, you know, we could still do that. But I think it kinda opens up the box a bit, because a road was thrown at me a week ago, another road, so, you know.
It, it does change. I mean, it changes everything.
Alright, so does it affect it if we say we only take eighteen million dollar bond? Even though you advertise in thirty, does it affect your numbers if we only go to eighteen million worth of projects?
The intent, that, that, that's the maximum. Now, we can do anything up to third. We can't do anything more. We can do ten million. We got two years to date the third.
You could come back and do a second deal if you wanted to. I mean, you could do.
A year from now, we could come back.
You could, you could do twenty, you authorize thirty million. You only issue twenty and then maybe you get with the premium, another million and a half. So you have twenty-one and a half, and that, that would be after netting out the costs. And then you could come back a year from now, because you've got the authorization for an additional ten and issue an additional ten at that point in time. And Lynn, I don't think.
Yeah, two years.
Two years from the date that we adopt the second resolution.
The second?
Yeah, we, we noticed, we, we adopt the intent resolution, we publish it, and then we adopt a second resolution when you have a public hearing. So it's two years from, so hypothetically, if we adopt it on.
June seventeen would be the perspective.
Yeah.
If everything times out right.
Now Lynn, how does that affect the repayments?
Really has that very insignificant impact on the, depending on the interest rate of the market.
Yeah, I mean, the interest rate could be a point more a year from now.
Or less.
Absolutely.
I mean, there, there are things that suggest next spring that it may be going down.
And, and the advantage on, on underwicking road like this and working with an underwriter, we're working through the market routinely, you know what our revenue stream is. We're not going to advise you to issue more bonds beyond that. Or you would make the decision, you wanna go ahead and issue, but you know what, you know what, you know, the deal is, you know what you're gonna pay. It's not like we have to wait until we open bids to find out, you know, what, what our debt payment's gonna be. We don't know that proportion.
Let's make it twenty, get it going. Come on.
With a couple of million dollars in that train, it's just your budget.
And the, the best, the best part of that is, since we've got the whole bond going now, we're gonna need this extra thirty million. And then that y'all killed my whole bond, we're gonna have to spend that money. I agree with you. Yep, so I'll second Bob, but I, I wanna add one other thing too.
What are you saying, Bobbo?
He, to advertise for thirty million?
Yes.
Alright, so, listen to me a second. Hang on a minute. Let, let me say this on the same point. The only other thing I wanna mention.
Sorry, I gotta turn back on my ear.
Turn it back on. Turn it back on a second.
And automatically got turned off.
Switch it back, get another swig of that over there and just bear with me a second. Alright, so the other part of this I wanna bring up, I want the, the existing project money that's coming out of Mike's budget to stop. All this stuff, these projects that are possible that are out there, the money that's coming out of his budget right now from all the different services that are coming out, we're draining the budget that's not intended to be drained for projects to stop.
That money is already being budgeted in. I get what you're saying.
It had enough.
But let's just say this, let's say, let's compromise then and say, end of May, first of June meeting, if we agree to stop funding the Andrew Chapel and the Gunner Road project, then it stops. But that should not, we don't halt those projects for the sake of, of trying to save two or three weeks of, of money. But if, if those projects are not voted on to fund out of this bond project, then it stops.
Every bit of.
They're every bit of, it stops.
That's what he's referring to. I think he's referring to these one offs like as in our work orders. Our daily work order's costing us over two million dollars a year.
Well, we, we gotta keep doing that.
Own constant.
Nah, nah, I'm not, nah. We, we can't, we can't, we can't start that.
Which are nothing. Half of which are nothing.
How many work orders you got over there now?
I have seven.
I got sixty-four. Sixty-four.
I'm sorry that, that, you know.
Then I got that many work orders.
I'm sorry they take care of me a little better than they do.
Hey, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, there's a first and a second.
I have a first, uh, Bob. I made a motion. Uh, Daniel seconded. I don't, do we need any more discussion?
If I could just clarify.
Yeah, I wanna clarify what the motion is first, I'll say.
The motion is that the intent resolution, which is nothing more than a statement of this board to the public, that you intend to issue up to and not exceeding thirty million dollars of a bond issue will be adopted on the fifteenth and will be published in the newspaper four times. There'll be a hearing date set on June seventeenth, the public can come and speak on it, oppose it, get a petition together, all of that. That's what's on the table. Thirty million dollars in that issuance, that does not mean that you aren't issuing thirty million dollars in bond. You are simply saying it will not exceed that. That's what you're voting on.
Right, and for the same side of that, we got timetable on when we're gonna identify these projects.
I say, Bob, what is the first June meeting, uh?
I want projects identified before we get into June.
We vote, we vote June third on a list of projects to be funded by this thing. So, at the last meeting of May, if you've got anything you want to adjust, put in whatever.
It comes in. That's right. It's gotta be.
On June third, so we have a list of projects, we show it June seventeenth, public hearing. If anybody comes up and asks a question, this is what we're spending the money on.
Exactly right. And that's, I'm with you, Lynn. If we can tie that into the motion, that's what I'm saying.
And, and we will have you guys some sort of, some sort of itemization of, uh, the projects that have been ongoing, that have planning, related costs in them. And what that reimbursement back to road and bridge out of the potential bond would be. We'll try to get you a, a total amount that is reimbursement to road and bridge from ongoing projects related to planning, engineering type services, okay? We'll try to get that number for you.
Alright, let me ask you one other final question. Well, I got two good attorneys in here. Let's just say we get to.
Three.
Jay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Four.
Are you an attorney? I didn't know that.
Oh, I thought, I thought both of them were.
Steven, it's, alright, so look, here's my question. Let's just say we get to the June, whatever date and meeting, and we all come up with that we cannot get along on any of these projects. And we say, I tell you what we're gonna do, none of them. We're gonna go right back, stop all projects, continue back on the way we were. We'll go down the route of raising taxes, get us back balanced out, squared up, and the bond never happens. No obligation to continue at this point. It can still stop. We don't even take any bond money, and we go right along at that point. Alright, perfect.
Alright, Mr. President, I think there's, there's a, we have a vote.
A motion, second. Any other discussion now? Alright, all in favor? Are any opposed?
Tell Bishop we're voting.
That'd be three, two.
Three, two. Alright, motion passes.
Alright. What else we can do today? Anything?
I don't, there's, there's a section for additional business, there's a section for executive session. I'm not aware of anything for executive session.
Let me call Bishop, see if we can get her past it.
Wanda, do you have anything?
I have so royally screwed up. I have missed my.
I got, I got, I got one thing I wanna pass by.
What?
Real quick.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I make a motion, Mr. President, recess March fifteenth, uh, May fifteenth, not AM.
Alright, Bob makes motion recess, um, till May fifteenth. Daniel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we have recessed.